I'm gonna call this, uh, City Council to order. I apologize, I've gotta get myself organized here. This being the day of our Lord, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, six oh one P. M. City Secretary Aguilar, roll call.
Mayor Hovind.
Present.
Mayor Protim Swanner.
Present.
Mayor Protim Mata.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vazquez.
Present.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Hayney. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item three invocation will be given to us by Pastor Jackie Brim, Second Baptist Church. Is Pastor here? Pastor one, Pastor two? No pastor? We have been going for zero for the last month, seems like it. So Pastor's not here, I will go ahead and volunteer to do the prayer tonight. And then we'll follow with the pledge of allegiance in Texas pledge led, uh, led by Councilmember Vazquez. Anyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer could do so by volunteering standing May you bow your heads and join me in prayer. Father God, we thank you for today, we thank you to, ahead of protection everyone here tonight that they traveled to this city council meeting tonight, as we do the business of the city, we do your will, Father God, not the will of ourselves. We ask that you bless this city to bless every family. Now that school's back in session, we ask a protection over our teachers, our, our parents and our children, as we continue through the school day and the activities start to begin and the kids go out there and start participating in activities, that they be safe and protected. We ask for wisdom, we ask for clarity, but most of all, we ask for unity, Father God. We do this in all, we do it to glorify you, Father God, and we do it in, in our Savior's name, Jesus Christ, and all the God-children, respond by saying?
Amen.
Councilman? Please join me in the pledges, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Yee-haw. Thank you. Um, we do have item five, proclamations. We have the American Legion Boys State Auxiliary Blue Monet, uh, Girls State Candidates Recognition. Um. Okay. It's been a big hectic today, so we're trying to catch up and catch up. Uh, who is this? Mayor, you watch out for the, uh...
I always throw everything away. I moved some of these microphones, it's, it's okay? Can, is this still audible? All right, perfect.
So, local students in our junior year, local students in their junior year were selected to represent Odessa, Texas, in the American Legion Boys State and the American Legion Auxiliary Blue Monet Girls State in June for a week. This is a nonpartisan political program that teaches students about local, county and state government. So the Boys State and the Girls State attendees, known as citizens, receive a special instruction in parliamentary procedure and organize themselves into a mock political parties. Oh, that's gotta be a lot of fun. The students in campaign hold rallies, debate and ultimately vote to elect city, county and state officials. Once elected to office, delegates are sworn in and perform their prescribed duties. Attendees not elected to office are given appointments, visit the offices of those elected to share their viewpoints as citizens, hopefully preparing them for public service. Each candidate was a rising junior, was a rising junior at their, at their school and were selected to attend the Boys or Girls State based on their academic achievement, citizenship, character, involvement in their school and community. So the candidates for State Boys State, are these in order, hopefully?
Yes.
All right.
They work.
So we're going to call each and every one, one at a time. City of Odessa Certificate Appreciation presents to David White, Compass Academy Charter School, on representing Odessa to attend the American Legion Boys State for the opportunity to learn the duties, rights and privileges responsibilities of American citizens. How you doing, sir? Congratulations. Give him a round of applause. I'm not gonna put them on the spot, I'm not gonna ask them which party they selected. City of Odessa Certificate Appreciation presents to Jack Freeman. Jack Freeman, Compass Academy Charter School.
All right, give him a call.
City of Odessa Certificate Appreciation presented to, uh, Avabella. I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna butcher it, I'm so sorry. How do you say that? Ava Bella, how do you say your last name? Bakari, okay. Well, congratulations, she is Compass Academy Charter School.
Thank you.
So City of Odessa Certificate Appreciation presented to Brooklyn Brand, Perman High So last, City of Odessa Certificate Appreciation presented to Allison Wright. Compass Academy Charter School.
Let's give another round of applause.
Next up, we have citizens' comments on non-agenda items. We're gonna do it under the citizen clause. That's okay.
You know, you got it.
All right, so we have one more very exciting announcement to make. Um, a few months ago, we, um, as everyone knows that we have a new sports complex being built, so we wanted to get the community involved, and what better way to do that than by reaching out to the students here in Nectar County. So we opened up a, um, a contest for the, uh, who could create our logo for our new sports complex. And, uh, it was opened up to, uh, all the college students, all the private schools, public schools, and we had a lot of submissions, and, um, some were really great and some were really funny, and, um, it was, it was a blast going through the, uh, all the submissions. So tonight, we're gonna make the ground announcement of who won the logo contest, and, uh, we are gonna have the logo up on the screen here in a minute, so that y'all can see it. But, um, let me, uh, just go ahead and go without any further ado and announce who the winner is. Also, before I do that, I wanna give a special thanks to Randy Hamm with Odessa Arts. Come on up here, Randy. He was a big help for, uh, doing this, you know, he has all the tools and how to get this, um, this art submission going and stuff, so if you want to, Randy, you can say a few words if you want.
I, I just wanna say it was an honor to work with the city on this project, and it was great that we were able to recognize the talent of our homegrown community right here, and that this logo represents a citizen from Odessa that will represent the sports complex for decades to come, and I can't thank you enough for giving our artists here in the Permian Basin that opportunity.
We appreciate you being part of it.
All right, so without further ado, I'm gonna read this, City of Odessa Certificate Appreciation presented to Karen Pacina for creating the winning logo that will brand the City of Odessa Sports Complex to be used in all marketing as a premier destination for sports activities in West Texas. Everybody, put your hands together and just applaud Karen Pacina. And up there on the screen, you can see the, uh, the logo, and there's just a little bit of bio about her, originally born in Mexico, moved to the States at fifteen, graduated high school in Edinburgh, Texas, and she's currently a senior at UTPB, Graphic Design major, and she was busy all summer as doing an internship, correct? So, um, congratulations again, Karen, we're proud of you. Thank you.
All right, everyone watching a wide and secure area. Citizen comments on non-agenda items. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. As your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. And in accordance with the open meetings law, the city council cannot respond, however, the council can direct the city manager or staff member to contact you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Azariah Ketchell. I've been a resident of Odessa, Texas for the majority of my life. It's my home, a home for which I've been aiming to improve through small businesses that I'm currently trying to build up, um, and various other means. I have, I'm here today to try and continue building up our community. I aim to improve the lives of not only the people, but the animals within our community as well. I believe in the community I reside in and want nothing more than to see it flourish. One of the ways I feel strongly that we could do this, or we could see this type of growth and improvement is for our animal services to choose to focus on more of the life-saving options that are available. With that in mind, I would like to ask for your support in advancing what is often referred to as a no-kill solution. As things stand, these approaches aren't even considered when animals like mine have been put in a position where their owner can no longer keep or care for them, and these owners have no other option but to seek to remove them through the citywide services that are available, all the while hoping that these services can provide a means to, to rehome or provide care for them until they can be adopted. When this was the only option available to me, my cat, Gothen, was not even afforded a full twenty-four hours in the shelter's care before he was put down. An animal who was never truly outside my home or around many other humans at all, which is a frightening experience for any animal. Apparently, the fear he felt was deemed as feral behavior by the animal control officers we employ, which led to his horribly swift euthanization. I guess what I'm trying to say with all this is that there are other options available. I understand that this issue shouldn't fall on one person or facility to accomplish, as lofty as these goals might seem at times. That said, working together always starts with two decisions, the decision to offer a helping hand and the decision to help, to accept the help. Here are the facts, our community of Odessa at this time has one of the lowest save rates in the state of Texas. As of July twenty twenty-four, we have ranked fourth in the state for highest kill rates. Many of these kills, mind you, being as unnecessary as the death of my cat. There are many ways we can change these rates for our city, one of which is adopting a no-kill resolution. A resolution would be a statement and commitment from our community leaders that we care about our cats and dogs, as well as are committed to finding and providing life-saving options for them.
Three minutes are up.
Can everybody hear me in the back, back row? All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during the consideration of the item. Council, can you review item six, consider agenda? And upon that review, I will entertain a motion to accept, to deny or amend.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, uh, vote by indication of aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move on to item seven, regular, uh, agenda item, section seven, item eight, consider proposal for performance based on contracting services. Mr. Niles?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council. On August first, a review committee evaluated the RFQs for assistance with the rehabilitation of the Bob Darrington Water Reclamation Plant. The two RFQs that were submitted were Performance Services and Johnson Controls. After our internal discussions and evaluation, the committee would like to recommend moving forward with Performance Services. We believe that PSI has a better understanding of the needs of the city, and they have already invested months of evaluation in the Bob Darrington Plant. Their three-phase approach has already commenced with the initial phase already complete, and they are ready to develop the design and phase of the program. This puts PSI nine to twelve months ahead of Johnson Controls. We also believe that PSI will be able to assist with funding mechanisms to assist the city with rehabilitating the Bob Darrington Plant.
That's it?
That's it.
Council, any questions? Discussion? We've been waiting for this question. We're here. So what's the, I'm sorry, what's the cost?
There's no cost, it has not been discussed. Yeah, it was an RFQ, so there was not an RFD or RFP, so there's no cost as of right now.
So you're gonna bring it to us individually, or it be as a package?
I believe it'll come to you as a package.
That's what I suspected.
I mean, this, this is gonna be based on what we're going, how we're going to pay it, we'll look at the financing mechanisms, and those savings is what we're gonna use for the, the payment of the funding mechanisms.
The savings that we, will occur along with grants and other funding mechanisms, they have a whole layout of, of a program.
Good, good.
Good. Sooner and sooner we can get that, that'd be better.
Council, any further discussion on item eight?
Just Kevin, thank you for your continuing push on this, this issue.
You're welcome.
If no further discussion or comments, entertain a motion to approve item eight as presented by Mr. Niles.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, second by Councilmember Thompson, all those in favor, a vote by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Standby, you got another item coming up. You should have paired you. Item nine, consider payment of bodily.
Mayor, that's, uh, you did. That's what I said.
Yeah, no, but we're on eight, we're gonna go, we can't jump that, we can't jump to ten, we didn't suspend the rules.
Yeah, 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 I was gonna say.
So I gotta go, I gotta go to nine.
He just told him to hang around.
I said, I just told him to hang around.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, I, yeah, I, I, I'm, that's it, that's what I said, we should have paired him. Item nine, consider payment of bodily injury settlement based on accident that occurred on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three involving a city driver in which a minor was injured. Ms. Griffin?
Hi, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, thank you, I'd like for you all to consider settlement offer that we're making for seventy-five thousand dollars to, um, close this case out. Um, their demand initially was around one fifty-six, and so we got them down to seventy-five, and it will be divided into three amounts, one for the medical injuries that the minor received, um, for the attorney, of course, and then a trust account for the minor.
Okay. Council, any discussion? I have, entertain a motion to accept the recommendation by Ms. Griffin on item minus presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cornell, second by Councilmember Vazquez, all those in favor, a vote of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin, thank you for negotiating that. Uh, item ten, consider the improvements at the Bob Darrington Wa, Water Reclamation Plant, Mr. Niles?
Again, good evening, Mayor and Council. Several months ago, the city council approved the allocation of ARPA funds to help mitigate several safety concerns and operational issues at the Bob Darrington Plant. The utility staff and the purchasing department worked with TIPS-approved design-built company, Triune Construction and Engineering LLC, to develop a scope of work at the Bob Darrington Plant that addresses the concerns presented to city council. Therefore, we're seeking approval to move forward with Triune to make safety improvements with fencing, railing, and improve operational, uh, conditions by rehabbing the grit removal system and replacing two overhead cranes. The total cost of this project is two point nine million dollars.
Kevin, when is this work gonna start?
As soon as we can get going, I'm assuming sometime in October, November time, if we can get the contract signed and move forward.
So it does include the cranes?
Two.
Yeah, I remember, yeah. Making sure. Council, any discussion or comments on item ten as presented by Mr. Niles?
Kevin, there's, there's eight items involved there, that would be hard for me, for you, uh, do you have criteria of which would be present, which, which should move to the first, which gets the first priority?
As far as what?
Oh, like the, um, the binge pumping or, uh, the grit system, which gets the higher priority to start?
Uh, well, they should be able to try to work on most of it at the same time.
Simultaneously, excellent, excellent.
Good. If no further comments or discussion, entertain a motion to, uh, accept item ten as presented by Mr. Niles.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Swanner, all those in favor, indicate by a vote of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. We're gonna move on to resolutions. Item eleven, consider establishing the maximum rate of zero point four six, six two seven cents for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Banda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I am bringing before you today, um, a resolution for consideration to adopt a maximum tax rate of forty-six, point four six six two seven five cents per hundred dollars valuation. This, um, amount was determined based upon the property values, of course, that we received from E-CAD and M-CAD, so those total property values this year, just so that you know, were twelve billion, twenty-five million, eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, and so that's about an eight point two percent increase from what we saw last year. So we are, um, proposing that specific rate. It is point zero one seven five, and I know this is a lot of numbers, but I just wanna get these out there, point zero one seven five one six cents per one hundred dollars, um, less than what we have currently, which is about point four eight cents per hundred dollars. The proposed rate is also, um, just slightly higher than the no new revenue rate for this upcoming fiscal year, just very slightly, by point zero zero three cents. Um, and it is, of course, below the voter approval rate of point four nine eight zero two seven cents per hundred dollars. Um, the no new revenue, I mean, the voter approval rate, I'm sorry, um, does have an unused increment rate built into it, um, but of course, we're not even going anywhere near the point four nine, so it's nothing that you need to look into or concern yourselves with unless you had any questions.
Council, any questions, any comments?
Mayor, we do have a speaker card.
Okay, go ahead.
Larry Robinson. Sir, you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, I know this may be a bit, a little bit late because the budgetary constraints and Kaylee's hard work she's put in, but I suggest we have a lower cap on that, forty-four cents, in view that late last week, ODC met and we decided to, uh, a budget proposal to allow thirty million dollars, our money, to go back towards infrastructure should the mechanics ever get worked out towards the city, which might cushion some of the load to the taxpayer since it is money that was accrued through sales tax anyway and be returned to the city. In an overall picture, it would be a lowering of the need for the citizens of Odessa in one faction or another, so I'd like the possibility of considering that. I know it's a late time, but this, I didn't have before mentioned knowledge of this until the meeting last week, and it is in proposal now and will be voted on next month. It is infrastructure related.
Can we respond in any form or fashion? Okay. I had some questions, but I'm asking, Ms. Roberts, I'm asking the city attorney, uh, we right now are trying to establish the tax rate, and you brought up something that I know I have no knowledge of, any, any action was taken by the ODC, so I'm asking the city attorney, can we respond to anything?
No.
Because it, it's way out of our, the agenda.
It is.
Okay. All right.
Got to stay on the agenda.
Like to be able to talk to you about after, after the fact, but right now, the agenda is basically what we're trying to adopt the tax rate. Thank you for that information. Absolutely. Is that it?
Yes.
Um, what's our action here?
You have to approve it.
Okay.
Approve the tax rate.
Discussion, council, any discussion, questions?
Takes two.
Takes two. We're gonna do it again, a couple weeks, we're gonna do another one.
Yeah.
Can't be unconcerned.
Any, any discussion or comments in the process, the, uh, the retreat, the rate? Now forever hold your peace.
So this, this is the first of?
First of two.
You'll approve the next one two weeks from now.
So it's, it's to my understanding that this is just establishing the maximum tax rate, um, once the budget is adopted, you'll vote on the actual tax rate two times.
Yes, yes.
So this, this will be the first of three times that you talk about it.
Uh, don't we also, posting?
Yeah, we gotta post it.
We gotta post it, and that's for thirty days, or what is it?
It's for thirty days, and it has already been posted.
Which nobody will, nobody will read.
It's been posted and published in the newspaper.
And this also takes a two-third vote, right?
Yes.
To promise this, okay. So item eleven, consider establishment. Sorry, Mayor. No, go ahead. What's the deadline? Don't we have, have it done by a certain time?
Yes, we, we will have it done because we're gonna come back on the twenty-seventh, and then we'll actually approve the budget then, and then go forward, so we'll be well ahead, the buck over first.
Okay, it's gotta be buck over.
Well ahead.
Making sure.
Couple weeks ahead.
Banda, anything else?
No.
All right. Uh, I entertain a motion to consider establishing maximum rate, tax rate of zero point four six six two seven cents for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year.
Same one.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, second by Councilmember Thompson, all those in favor, a vote of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move on to item twelve, consider amending the budget fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four by appropriating funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred for general funds to, to expand on the outstanding expenditures of the twenty twenty-four Fourth of July Fandango. Mr. Beckman?
All this is, is the money that came in from things like booth sales, from, uh, the different donations and different sales at Fandango. We still have a few lingering bills from that, and this is just to move the money so that they can be paid.
Council, any questions, discussion, now entertain a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vazquez for approval?
Yes.
Second by Councilmember Cornell, all those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move on to item thirteen, consider an on-call list for professional engineering services. Ms. Burns?
Yes, good evening. As you may recall, on June nineteenth, we issued an RFQ for on-call engineering services, and twelve submittals were received. We would like to include all twelve firms on our on-call list to provide professional engineering services such as infrastructure assessments and design services on an as-needed basis. The cost for each, each service will not exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with a total cap of five hundred thousand dollars per firm per year. Um, despite this on-call list, each professional service agreement will still require council approval before any project will commence. Um, the on-call list will be effective for one-year term with option to renew for another year, and implementing this on-call list will streamline the process for professional services that meet this criteria, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Are these all local firms?
Um, yes, most of them are local, we do have a couple that are like national firms with, um, offices in like the Lubbock area or San Angelo, but for the most part, they're all local.
Christina, could you explain the on-call, just, just a deep dive into that a little bit more to on-call? The, um, would you still say that there were the twelve engineering firms?
The, would you still say that there were the 12 engineering firms, for example, would you still have to put out a bid?
No, so this would help streamline the process. So for on-call services that are within or less than $250,000, we won't have to do another RFQ process.
Streamlining them.
Yes. Now, if it's a larger project, that is gonna be more than that amount, then it would still have to go through an RFQ process, yes. So this is more of the smaller projects that pop up throughout the year, so smaller scale that allows us to be more efficient.
On-shelf projects.
Yeah. This is for our on-shelf projects, that's a good.
Yes, yes.
The ones we're trying to get on the shelf.
To create, yeah, shelf-ready projects.
Which we haven't been doing. That's good.
Council, if no further discussion or comments, entertain a motion to consider approval of item 13, consider on-call list for professional engineering services.
So moved.
I have a motion for approval by Councilmember Mata. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, but Councilmember Swannar, all those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move on to item 14, consider an on-call list for professional land surveying services. Ms. Burns.
Yes, so this is very similar to the last one. However, this was our RFQ for land surveying services. We did receive eight submissions. We would like to include all eight, sorry, all eight firms on our on-call list. However, the cost for each service for this category will not exceed $100,000 per project, with a total cap of $250,000 per firm. Same as the other one, it'll have the same one-year term with the option to renew for another year, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions?
Same reasoning here, ready shelf projects?
Yes, well, this is more for surveying projects that will benefit development as well as public works. So anything that comes up that we need a survey, we don't have the capacity to do a lot of those surveys in-house, so this will allow for that ability.
Yeah, even though we do have surveying department.
So that'll help us get some more projects done, like with MPO and Texas.
Yes, yes, sir.
They like it when we have them.
Yes, ready to go.
Any further questions or comments, council? Now entertain a motion to adopt or approve item 14, consider an on-call list for professional land service, surveying services. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilmember Cornell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thompson. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move on to item 15, consider an on-call list for professional architectural services. Ms. Burns.
Yes, so this is an RFQ for on-call architectural services, and we received three submissions. We would like to include all three firms on our on-call list for professional architectural services that would provide design services, facility assessments, and programming recommendations. The cost for each service will be capped at $100,000 for a total of $250,000 per firm per year, and everything else is the same, same one-year term with the option to renew for an additional year. From the three, one is a local and two are national.
Council, any questions or comments? Now entertain a motion for approval.
I shall move.
Have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swannar. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 16, consider awarding bid for Sherwood Park resurfacing. Mr. Reyes.
Good afternoon, councils.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, this is to consider the award, to award the bid for resurfacing the playground at Sherwood Park to Playground, et cetera, at the cost of $348,564. Currently, the playground is full of pea gravel, and it's no longer ADA compliant.
We have pea gravel at Sherwood?
Oh, yeah.
Sherwood, it's sand.
Well, I know the sand isn't in the playground, it's all over the park.
Exactly.
Okay, what's the estimated cost on that, Mr. Reyes? Where's it coming from?
What do you mean?
The money.
The money.
From our budget, it's been budgeted.
So this one, it's already been budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. Council, any questions? What do we, I'm sorry, one more time, one more question. What are we placing it with? The same thing we're doing at McKinney?
Poor in place, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what I was asking.
Cool stuff you showed us.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Max, thank you for fourth district.
And it does need to be done. I went out and met Max, and.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Yeah, I wasn't joking about the sands not in the playground. It's all over the park, and every time we get a wind, it redistributes all over the place.
What kind of vandalism can you describe that has been going on with the surface that is there now?
It's been burned, poured some chemicals on it, and they light it on fire, and, I mean, it's developing big old holes on the current turf, razorblading, they're just cutting it all up to pieces. It's deteriorating. The existing surface right now has turf, and it's got animal features in it, and so it's pillin' in that area, and it's really hard to replace. Poor in place is the latest and greatest that's out on the market, and so that's kinda what we're leaning towards. It's cooler, it's softer, it kinda helps on the vandalism, because now you can select or work just on the damage areas itself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reyes.
And not having to do the whole process.
And you said it was ADA compliant? Did you say it was ADA compliant?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Currently, we're not ADA compliant anymore.
And that's one of the issues that we had to deal with, with that one, that one family that, and I'm really happy that you, the parks in your department were able to accommodate them with the surrounding things that needed.
Yes, sir.
Council, if there is no more questions or discussion on this item, consider a motion for approval on item 16.
So moved.
Mr. Reyes, I have a motion by Councilmember Cornell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swannar. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item 17. Kevin's all over the place. Consider the approval of contract of valve assessment and maintenance services. Mr. Niles.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As discussed in work session, we would like the council to go ahead and approve the contract with HydroMax USA to complete the valve assessment program of over 13,000 valves throughout the city.
Yes, so, council, do we have any questions?
So the priority is the valves?
We're gonna start from the towers and work our way out.
That's what I thought. Okay, start going up.
And this is the assessment and the working, what's broke, what's not, what's broke open, what's broke closed.
Yeah.
This is paid for from savings that we had at major budget.
Great job.
Good job.
You know, one of the things is, we knew we had a situation with the valves, and we had to go through the assessments, and then a priority list, but the thing is, the biggest step is we're gonna get the money without being able to impact the community. So great, great job to the staff to be able to assess those, to be able to go mid-budget, be able to make that assessment, find the money, and we went through the steps, and now we're here. Now it's just get these things going.
It's, the importance, I know I keep hitting on these valves over and over, but it is important. We had a pretty major break today, a pretty good break today. We were able to isolate it, how many people really knew.
Yeah.
If you can isolate it, you can fix it.
Yep. That was 87th and Evans?
Yep.
Somewhere over there.
Something like that.
Yes.
And it's gonna happen, but if you can isolate it, you can fix it.
So, council, there is no more discussion or?
Yes, sir.
What's the total cost on this?
We're estimating a million dollars.
Any other questions, comments? If no more questions or comments or discussion, entertain a motion to approve item 17 as presented by Mr. Niles.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swannar, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. We're gonna move on to section eight, miscellaneous. Item 18, consider posting the job of associate municipal court judge position and accepting applications for said position. City Attorney Jones?
Mayor, council, as you know, Judge Kidd, his last day, I believe, was this past Friday on the ninth. He has gone to Kentucky. I think he is retired. He's farming now in Kentucky, and so we need to post the job for associate municipal court judge and start accepting applications. Of course, that is one of the five positions that is appointed by council, so I just need a motion so that I can get HR to start posting it like we did here last year.
Council, no discussion or comments. Have a motion for item 18 to consider posting the job of associate municipal court judge position and start accepting applications for this set position. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swannar, second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating same, all opposed, same sign.
Motion.
Motion passed unanimously. I was already, I was there skipping a step there. Item 19, discuss and consider the Odessa Development Corporation appointees, removal appointments, operations, and leadership changes. Council, open up for any questions, comments, or discussion.
Mayor, council, I'd like to make a motion to remove Jeff Russell, acting president of ODC, from the ODC board as ODC voted on contractor agreements and the rental agreement, which were not posted properly in accordance with the Texas Opening Meetings Act. Furthermore, contractors had not reviewed their agreements, and none of the agreements have been presented by ODC legal counsel at the time of the vote by ODC.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, go ahead, Ms. Drainey.
I would like a motion to allow Mr. Jeff Russell to stand up and defend himself on this.
We don't need a motion for that. We have, we have a motion, and so I'm not gonna call for a second, but I am gonna ask for discussion. Do we have any?
Mayor, we do have some speaker cards.
Adam Secretary, go right ahead and start calling whoever's filled out a card.
Dallas Kennedy, and just as a reminder, you do have three minutes.
Just state your name for the record, sir.
Dallas Kennedy. I'll tell you, I was at the last city council meeting, I was in Yellowstone, and I'm such a political junkie that I was sitting in a vacation hotspot in my hotel room watching the city council meeting on my phone, and quite frankly, I was embarrassed by what I saw. For once, I was almost embarrassed to be part of Odessa. There appears to be a big rift between the city council and the ODC, and we can't have that. We've got to, I don't know what the remedy is, I don't know who's right or wrong, and frankly, I don't care. I care about the city of Odessa, and I care about ODC doing its job and doing it correctly. So I hope that the city council will make the correct decisions to do what they have to on behalf of the businesses of Odessa, so we can move on and get our businesses going back right again. Thank you.
Larry Robinson?
City Council, Mayor, I'm Larry Robinson, ODC member. I'm here to speak in behalf of Jeff. Solidarity, I think he's done a wonderful job. He has, brings a lot of resources to us. He continues a lot of projects that may not have been made without him. He has a great knowledge in abatements and discounts and things that we use every day in our planning, and he stays awake and alert anytime he's in this council, unlike Mr. Steve Thompson, who, when he's on his side, is usually asleep, who has made the suggestion and the motion to get rid of Jeff, so I'm gonna point that out. I have probably 40 pictures of him snoozing back here. That aside, I believe Jeff, it's imperative to keep him on this board. We have a lot of projects going. They're very, very extensive in all of the particular matters in the coming forth, and should you dismiss him, I would ask you to put a moratorium on Odessa Development Board completing any projects before the election time, just for continuity, should there be changes on the council, which would change the appointees and the whole meaning, because some of these projects are very intense, and he's a very integral part of seeing the ones currently we have to completion. That's infrastructure. We have inland port, we have several other things brewing, and these things, I think, are gonna require him to be there, and absent him, I don't think we could continue with the projects in a full bore manner, as I would like it to be completed. I don't believe in going anything halfway, so I can't see that in the next two months that the board of, board, Odessa Development Corporation could make valuable decisions in that time without him on board. It was unconscionable to release Chris the way he was done in this last meeting. His daughter was in the hospital in a car wreck, and he was not here able, after having a car wreck, and he was not here able to present himself, and so I don't think that was a reasonable way to handle that. I think communications is better than giving somebody the axe when they're not here, but I would like to continue to see Jeff on our board. He exhibits great leadership. We're in the midst of a change of leadership right now due to Chris being gone, and I would appreciate y'all's second consideration in keeping Jeff on board at least till through the election process, which could change the board entirely. So I think we need to look at that. I think six, two meetings, two months, won't make that much difference on what we do, it may make a lot of difference on what we don't do. So I would like to keep it to continuity by keeping him there. Thank you very much.
Ronnie Phillips?
I just saw the agenda item 19, so he has two issues that he would like to talk about.
Which one are you speaking on first? Agenda item or non-agenda?
ODC.
Agenda item, okay.
Okay. My name is Ronnie Phillips. I am a resident of Odessa, Texas. I'm, kinda could say the same thing that Larry did. It was embarrassing what y'all did to that man. It was actually a hatchet job that this side of the court lined up somewhere, maybe on their own, for the ODC. Now, these guys are set in place, I've watched this ODC for years, these guys are set in place to keep you from doing what you're doing. Y'all have a money grab going on that you want their money. Now, they're very careful and cautious about how they do this and how they distribute their money, and that's why they're in place, is to keep you from coming in and going, you have all this money, we don't have any, we want yours. Now, the way you did it was just like you did today, that's why I'm here today. I picked this up yesterday, and I saw what was gonna go on today, and that's not it. And, sir, Mr. Thompson, you should be embarrassed for you to sit there and tell somebody after they've been through all the ordeal of, as a businessman, of going through and filling out all the applications, and they're already awarded the money, and then you have the nerve to spend the tax mayor's money by going, you got $200,000, and that's what they asked for, but you asked, you were trying to give them $400,000 more money that the company didn't even ask for. The last thing on this ODC thing is, that ODC is made for diversification, not oil and gas. How many rental companies are up and down Interstate 10 or Interstate 20 right now already? It's for oil and gas. Quit trying to take stuff from Midland and bring it over here. Do the best we can to be the people that we are and the people that we represent. So the same thing tonight, I don't know this guy over here, I know he runs Paul Evans Carpet, but he's a businessman, so I trust that, I trust his judgment in what he's doing and what he has to do. Now, if there's a problem, they were doing it exactly right. They weren't letting you speak to their attorney until they had it all situated. There's nothing wrong with that. If any of y'all are in business, what I think most of you are, you understand that. You don't get up and just spout off and say whatever you wanna say until you're ready. Am I correct? You can't answer, I'm sorry. That's right, that's all.
You had a non-agenda item?
Yes.
Yeah, you're, you're already at the podium, sir.
Now, this sounds like I'm picking on somebody or not.
No, no, no. Now, this is a non-agenda item, I will remind you, we cannot respond to this non-agenda item. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. The next one is, is what's going on with Mr. Beckmeyer. You know, all of a sudden, y'all need to be more transparent, you want to talk about transparent, transparent? Where did $25 million come from, exactly? Not, oh, we'd shuffle some numbers. Did he have it in his desk drawer up in the city office? I don't know, but nobody else knows. The 25 million to come in to do this, and repair the vows or whatever, that we, all of a sudden, we found, this is what the paper said, the news story said, we found $25 million. We found it. Now, you might have found it in the budget, you might have moved some constraints around, but that's what we need to know as a public, we'd like to know where it came from. The next thing was the bonding issue. The bonding issue that, that he's caused, he needs to be terminated, just like that. I'm not, I'm not trying to be, follow your lead, but that's it. If this, if anybody else, you want to do the ODC this way, he, he messed up. Now, what's it going to, we want to know exactly what's the problem's going to be from Odessa, trying to get bonds now for future. What's going to happen when you need money and you can't get it? And that needs to be done. I don't, I'm not claiming against this man, other than his job. I'll say this, he doesn't need to be out there on the street with, with his hand on the backing truck sucking water out of dicks, he needs to be up here in his office, getting caught up, that's what he should have been doing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's reasons why I won't address the bonding issue, but Sir, I will address what actually has been in the public, the 25 million. It's very easy. We have an account from Pioneer where we took 20 million out of it, it's for these types of product, projects. We have a 2019 bond that wasn't all spent on the project that it was bought, that it was got for, established for, and 5 million was taken out of that. It wasn't in my desk drawer. It was.
It was explained.
It's been explained at two, two different public meetings.
Next speaker, Jeff Russell.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Counsel. I'll, I'll address the heart of Mr. Thompson's erroneous allegation. We, we did not violate Open Meetings Act. I was forwarded an email this morning from City Attorney Dan Jones alleging that we had, and so had Jeff Moore, the ODC attorney, look at it, and he said, no, he said, he said, under the 2023 HB 3440, we don't have to post the entire agenda packet. We only have to post the agenda. Also, the entire ODC Board had seen all of the contracts at the previous Thursday workshop, when we went through our budget and our workshop, our contracts, all of our contractors were there, they had seen those contracts as well. The only changes were minor changes to total amounts, there were no other terms that were changed on any of the contracts. And, and also, there were just date changes, because we're going into the new year. So no, no, no controversy here. Mr. Jones was incorrect in his allegation that we'd invited, violated the Open Meetings Act of Texas. I can give you guys the particular section, at Section 551.056, as amended by HB 3440 in 1920, in 2023 session. So, that, that's a totally false and erroneous allegation. I'm also perfectly willing to ask, to answer any other questions that, that any of the council members might have in that regard.
So I've got one question for you. The documents that you presented at that ODC meeting, which I was sitting out there looking at, those are 20, 23, 24 documents, not 24, 25.
Yes, and we approved them as.
And I looked at your handbook, your workshop.
That weren't even presented.
And it was the same thing, it was the 24, 25. On the, to be specific, on the chamber contract, you took out the 90-day or three-month, the three-month clause, and put back in a year.
Yes, there were some minor changes, and we approved those.
That's not mine, Jeff, that's not mine.
Mr. Thompson.
I'm sorry, that's not mine.
I, I'm sorry, that's not your, I, I don't understand what you're saying there.
I, I'm saying that's not a minor change.
Well, the ODC Board as a whole approved those changes and amendments pending final clean copies and, and getting all those to the, to the vendors for signature and back to us for signature. It's not, not much different that I recall, not any different than what we've done in previous years. So I, I'm not sure, I think, I think, I think honestly, Mr. Thompson, you're trying to make him out and out of a molehill, and there's really not anything here to, to complain about.
I guess we disagree, because I, I've done my research as well, and I believe you violated.
Well, I'll, I'll stand on, I'll, I'll stand on Mr. Jeff Moore, our, our attorney, who does this for a living, so I'll, I'll take his advice over, over others.
That's fine, that's fine. The day you hired him, I, I worried about it, because I knew at some point, Mr. Jones sits on this dais at your meeting, but he's powerless, because he cannot stop what's going on. If he sees some egregious action, he can't stop, because he's not your attorney. So I disagree with that. I knew this day was going to come, my attorney, your attorney, cross purposes, and to the other gentleman's comment, that money that's in the bank at ODC, which is 90-plus million dollars, is taxpayer money. It's not your money, it's not their money, it's, and it's not, the city of Odessa has their right.
Absolutely, I totally, I totally absolutely agree with you, Mr. Thompson.
The city of Odessa has, the city council has absolute right to request whatever it wants to request out of that money to get done, what it needs to get done, and we've all been through that 14,794 times, 501.103, say that we can do.
You, you tend to lack the, the willingness to look at the details of 501.103. This is what our meeting was last Friday, as we went over those details with a known expert in the state of Texas, Mr. Jeff Moore.
Well, the meeting you barged in on uninvited?
Uh, no, I didn't, I didn't barge into it uninvited, my appointee instructed me, he wanted me here.
Okay.
So I don't know why we were having closed-door meetings anyway, when my, my goal had been for the, for the previous week, to have an open, public meeting, joint meeting between city council, ODC, and Jeff Moore, so that the public, who's the most important party in this whole, in this whole thing, so that the public could hear the discussion, and, and hear all of the, all the comments made by the attorney, so that they would know what's really real.
Well, Mr. Moore works for the city of Odessa as well, Ms. Swannar read, read the contract last meeting, he works for us as well.
She, she read one, she read one paragraph out of context, so, I mean, we can, we can, we can do the whole contract and look at it as a whole. It clearly says, that contract clearly says that the client of Jeff Moore is the Odessa Development Corporation, period.
Mr. Jones, is that what it says?
Well, it says that, but it also says he works for the city of Odessa, and he works through me.
No, no, it does not say that, Mr. Jones, it says that. Does somebody have that letter? I didn't bring it with me.
Can we invite Renee Earls up?
Why, why don't we let the expertise of Mr. Russell and Mr.?
I'd like to hear what Ms. Earls tells us about.
Hold on, hold on, let me finish my comment. We're going to hear about the expertise of the president, I don't know what, what capacity he's serving right now. So why don't you go ahead and finish that, your thought process, Mr. Russell?
Yeah, so Paragraph three says, yeah, or Paragraph two, actually, that identity of the client will be representing the interest of the Odessa Development Corporation, a type A economic development corporation. That's who he's representing. Now, in the nature and scope of representation, we understand as attorneys for ODC that our present relationship is to represent and provide legal counsel to the city of Odessa and the city attorney on an as-needed basis. All we've ever asked for, and because we were getting such a confused mess of people calling Jeff Moore, asking him similar questions, but, but not exactly the same question, and feeling like he was giving them different answers, all Mr. Crowe had done last time was simply ask, I want one point of contact. He did not say, he never said. I was on the call with him, in the instructions to Jeff Moore, he said, if anybody other than me called you.
You were on what call?
I was on the call when we had Jeff Moore, it was me, Mr. Crowe, Jeff Moore, on a call, we were talking about infrastructure, and at the end of that call.
When was that, Mr. Russell?
That was, help me out here. I, I, about July the 15th, somewhere in that neighborhood.
This was after the June meeting, correct?
Yes. This was after the June meeting, because we had had a call with him to further explore, because we'd gotten into the issue of what ODC could and couldn't have provided funding for in terms of infrastructure.
So you never had a discussion with Mr. Moore, both then the president of ODC and the vice president, before that June meeting?
No, I don't believe, no.
So that call came afterwards?
That came after the June meeting.
Okay.
We had had, we'd had.
Sorry for their answering, go ahead.
Okay, we, we had had, we'd had email correspondence and other things, because we had looked at, you know, what, what could we, as ODC, what could we legally provide in terms of infrastructure support? So we'd had those discussions, I don't think we were on a joint call together, I don't recall the three of us ever being on a call before that mid-July call. And so we had, we'd asked Mr. Moore to prepare a memo in writing, after we'd kind of had our, our agenda item on the, on the June meeting derailed, and so we'd asked him to put it in writing, and at the end of that.
Well, where are we at on our three minutes?
Counsel, we are skating way outside of the rules of the public comment, period.
So, Ms. Russell, you have three minutes.
By interacting with.
Can we finish a thought here for a second, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So, we do have three minutes, and you have the three minutes in comment. The topic today, and the item on the agenda, is the discussion and consent of the ODC regarding the, oh, I'm sorry, it is about the, where's my agenda number? I'll put mine's up. So, let me read this. So the, the item on the agenda is discuss and consider Odessa Development Corporation appointees, removal appointment of operations, leadership changes. The topics that you're discussing is that we're now talking and going back to the June meeting, and then you and the former president of the ODC, Mr. Crowe, on discussions and emails that you had prior to the June meeting, and then after the June meeting. And so that is not on the agenda. So please stay on the agenda if you have, you've had three minutes, is there anything else you want to speak on discussion and consideration of the Odessa Development Corporation in the three following, in the following categories? Corporation appointees, removal, appointment of, operations of, and leadership changes.
Sure, removal of me. This is a motion that's on the table right now for Mr. Thompson.
One more minute, you've already gone past.
Well, I've, I've answered, I mean, Mr. Thompson is basing it upon his, his supposed violation of the Open Meetings Act, which is just incorrect. So the Board will have, the, the council will have to weigh that, as they make a decision on whether they want to support Mr. Thompson in removing me from, from the board.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Mayor, may I ask, Ms. Earls, have you seen your contract agreement yet?
Ms. Earls, can you come up, state your name for the record?
Renee Earls, CEO of the Odessa Chamber.
Have you seen?
I hate to get in the middle of all this, but.
Well, have you seen your contract agreement yet?
No, I have not.
Did you see it when the vote was taken Thursday?
No, I did not. I will say, in the defense of ODC, on the agenda, it mentioned contractor agreements. Now, the, the meeting, a couple of weeks prior to that, the budget meeting, they reviewed the development plan that, that each contractor submitted. So I think maybe that's what they were approving, but I have not seen a contract.
But it's that agreement.
I have not seen a contractor agreement.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't think any of the others did, I don't know if there's anybody else here, but I have not.
Thank you. Counselmember Haney, you have the floor, you're recognized.
Mr. Thompson, it seems like you've got a good way of just getting under everybody's skin, but that's okay, but I did hear that you said that the ODC is not, is not the city's piggy bank. You've said that multiple times, and you said this in the past, but what I'm going to talk about is, is where somebody on this city council has basically broke the law, not once, but a couple of times, and, you know, without naming names, we fired.
Mr. Haney, you're, you're not on the agenda.
We are on the agenda, because this is representing, firing somebody again. So we are on this agenda. And so now we're firing one of the best workers you've heard as people, and now you guys are wanting to fire another one?
But this is, but are you, are you, are you going to defend Mr. Russell?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what I'm getting to, if you let me.
Okay, whether that would be on the agenda.
Okay, so I am getting to that.
Okay.
So, by saying this, you have gone after this, and the only reason you're going after this is so it makes your life easy to get, Mr. Thompson, that, that you can get to this money easy without having resistance to this. For your jobs up there, that you're wanting to consider money for your roads up there, you want money to consider for other things built up there, for your friends up there, and it's only been known, and it's still known today, and so I don't think you're the man that should be calling this, that you should be asking for somebody to resign, I think you should be resigning from this council, and, and not rerunning again. So, that's where I'm at.
By the way, just to correct the record, I did not say it was a piggy bank. One of the people on ODC said, we are not the council's piggy bank.
I've heard you say that.
I have never said that.
I'm not a liar.
Counsel, no. Counsel, we will maintain a decorum.
Yep.
We can disagree, and we can agree to disagree, but we will keep a decorum, we will keep civility, we will not take cheap jabs at one another. I ask you to be professional. We are adults here, we are discussing an agenda item that any of them on the council had a right to bring up, it was brought up, and, and we, and we're discussing in the midst. Passive-aggressive type of, of jabs is just, it's beneath everyone, and, and let me tell you one thing from the city of Odessa, nobody wants to be able to see this. And so, you know, this council has worked very hard, you know, it's, it's, I, I like everybody's passion, but please, please, have respect for one another. One of the things, please don't put words in another council member or any other person's mouth that they said, or et cetera, or heard said. And so, you know, those, you know, let's stick to the facts, if you please. I know, we saw another card, go ahead and call.
Chris Crowe.
State your name for the record, and for the minutes, and three minutes.
Chris Crowe. Mr. Mayor, Counsel, thank you for your time. A few things, I think it would be a travesty to remove Jeff Russell from the Odessa Development Corporation Board. He brings a lot of energy, he brings a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge to this board, that the board does, Mr. Robinson did such a great job of, of talking about that the board needs. Mr. Thompson, your, your allegations are completely unfounded, as comes from the ODC attorney. The reason we have a separate attorney is for occasions just like this. There will be times when the Odessa Development Corporation, and what they're trying to do may not line up exactly with what council's trying to do, and so the ODC having their own attorney that is a specialist in economic development in the state of Texas lends to benefit both entities, the ODC and city council. I urge you to, to look at that. Now, as far as your accusation on contracts, if you'll go back and look through, far as I can remember, this is the way the contracts have been done. Contracts come to the ODC Board, they look at it, they discuss them, there's a prior meeting, if it's all good, ODC approves it, it goes to the contractor, the contractor looks at it, if they agree with it, they'll sign it, if they don't, it comes back to the ODC Board for a second look. So this is, this is normal process, I'm sorry you don't agree with it, but this is normal. This is, in my opinion, nothing more than a witch hunt, for whatever reason it may be. I just urge you, look at the facts, look at what's here, you've, you've got a great person representing you on the Odessa Development Corporation. Please think twice before you remove Jeff. Do you have all the cards?
Yes.
Counsel, is any other, further discussion?
Yes. If we're going to vote on this, I think that Mark needs to remove himself from this, because Jeff pulled a, a deal to run against him as a.
Mayor.
As a, as a city councilman, and so this looks like that Mark is out to get.
That is completely false, Mr. Counselman Haney.
Well, what else does it look like?
Mr. Haney, that is just an opinion, and to erroneously put this in this meeting and make an accusation, I had, I had just said to.
That wasn't an accusation, that's the truth.
Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Lewis wants to say.
Mr. Lewis, you have, just state your name for the record.
My name's Ronnie Lewis, and I.
Just state your name for the record, you've got three minutes, sir.
Okay, Ronnie Lewis, and what, what I'd like to bring to attention about Mr. Russell is that he's lost three races politically for our voters in Hector County, and y'all know me, and I represent voters, I think I, voter outreach is one of, what I do, I talk to voters, I talk to citizens, I'm out all over this town. But Jeff Russell has lost three elections by the voters, and for Mr. Haney, who appointed him, to have so much input, whereas the voters over the last three or four years have said no to him, I would like the council just to consider that, to represent the voters, if you could do that, if that makes any sense to you. Just, just think about the, he's had three opportunities to get elected by the citizens of Odessa, and the citizens of Odessa has denied him every time. Just keep that in mind when you come, come to vote, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, you have a motion on the floor.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I have a motion on the floor. Can we state that motion? Hold on. Before we do that, before I, 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 I'm going to be able to say something real quickly, if you don't mind. You know, there's a lot of things that was said here that we, that were way off agenda. There were some comments about this council wanting to utilize and just do a money grab and, you know, there's been some accusations about our city manager about just pulling out money out of nowhere. I've seen those comments. And I'm the one that instructed our city manager to look into the pioneer money during the change of leadership. This is one, one thing that, and since we got elected, that I was asking about pioneer money.
Don't get too far off.
I understand. And so, it was very hard to be able to get any list, leadership change. We were able to access files and accounts that we presumed existed, we found evidence that existed. We had to go through an audit process and we were completing that audit process. I instructed the city manager to inquire through our finance department and Ms. Manda to identify those monies in pioneer. It was in, it was brought up to this council that 40 million was in that account. This is money that has been paid to the city that we could utilize for our infrastructure. It didn't come out of the air and it wasn't proof that we knew it was there, but we had to get to that process. City manager and his staff, then because of the work they've done, were able to identify that 20 million, then went further and identified an additional 14 million that were for a contingency way too high on the water treatment plant and 5 million came from that. There's no money grab going here. It is very conservative of what we're trying to do without affecting the taxpayer. Could many be, the staff should be commended for the work that they've done to be able to address a very growing issue that we were being told that we were ignoring constantly and that we were ignoring the, the master plans. We knew they were, they were there. Mr. Mata Infamity will always hear that, one thing he learned when we first got on the council, there's no lack of master plans. When nobody laid the groundwork is the steps of how to fund them, and that's what we've been working.
Exactly.
The other one is an erroneous comment about who picked up packets, who's running is just way out of line. And so, these personal jabs serve no one. We should all be adults here. I'll say this on a personal note, whatever took place, it... I'm going to ask this question of the city attorney. What's your criteria of every appointment of every committee, including the ODC? What is their criteria of their appointment? They serve at the pleasure of...
The pleasure of each one of you.
What is that definition? What does that actually mean in the most lame in terms of nobody understands what that means?
That means that if you want to remove them, then you can remove them. Of course, every, one of those removals or appointments are subject to a full city council vote.
Does cause have to be established?
No. You can say you don't like the color of his shirt and remove him. You can say you like the color of his hair, point him, whatever you want to do.
And so...
It's, it is literally whatever y'all want to do.
You know, I wrote something down because this is... This is just for me, and I want to make this, this statement. I, I want everyone to know that none of this should be taken lightly. I know I don't take it lightly. And what happened a couple of weeks ago and the removal of Mr. Crowe from the, from the ODC was extremely, a very extremely hard thing to do. You know, Mr. Crowe and I are friends. He wound up giving me a stone. I wish I'd have brought it back here because I remember what it meant to me when you gave it to me. I wonder now if you still remember what that meant. For me, it's caused a lot of anguish personally. I'm visibly shaken about this and, and it's definitely caused some problems here on city council. But at the end of the day, and I take this even more seriously, that I have a solemn obligation to do what's best for the city of Odessa and what's best for our citizens. And I felt that we had no choice but to make that move, and I didn't come to that conclusion lightly and easily. There's been some chatter about also removing Jeff Russell. In fact, Mr. Crowe called me this morning and he asked, "What was the agenda item?" I said, "You need to come to the city council." He wanted to know what my thoughts were, and I said, "You're going to have to come to, to, to the council for that discussion." I have a policy that I will not discuss on social media, policy, council, agenda items, and I won't do it on the phone with anyone. But it was my sincere hope to me that Jeff would prove to be a positive cooperative and work with this council and each and every one of us. I've come to this conclusion not easily, as since of the last meeting, it, it's very apparent to me that not only does Mr. Russell, who I've known since the eighth grade, you know, he doesn't remember me. I met him back when he was actively working to, on the, on the courthouse issue, one that he ran a campaign for it not to pass. I introduced myself to him and he did not remember me. He remembered other people around me, but not me. And one thing about me is that I'm very bad at names and I cannot, for some reason, Jeff made an imprint on me in Spanish class of Ms. Mtevedos in the eighth grade. After that class, I never saw him again until I met him again in his initiative, he was leading against the courthouse. I called him a best friend. I don't think, he considers me a best friend, and that's okay. But since that last meeting, I wanted it to be positive, I wanted Jeff to be cooperative. But it's rather abundantly clear to me that I feel that Mr. Russell's gone to a point where sabotaging relationships has become his number one thing. I'm not going to repeat and say the things that have been said. People were talking to me, now they're talking about me. I will never interject my personal into this. And I said this and I'll say that, my solemn, solemn objection, my sole obligation is what's best for the city of Odessa and what's best for each and every citizen is here. This is an extreme, and let me finish my thought, Mr. Haney, please. This is an extremely difficult position for me to arrive, but I can't buy me look any other way than what I see in the way it is right now. Mr. Haney, I'll recognize you one more time. Roll call vote. You call the question?
Yep.
I have a, I have a motion. Is that a second? Mr. Haney, is that a second?
What?
I have a motion already, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for the removal of Jeff Russell.
Before we move on forward with this, let me just address Haney's, Lutaca's claim. Ms. Aguilar, who picked up a packet for District One? Was it Jeff Russell or was it his son Herschel?
It was Herschel.
Okay, so Jeff Russell did not pick up a packet?
No.
So, up until now, it hasn't, nothing's been posted, he's running in District One? So, there's no reason for me to have to abstain from any vote?
No, I mean, even if there were, there'd be no reason for you not to be able to...
Only if you have a conflict would you need to abstain. And it's not a conflict, by the way.
It's not a conflict because he's, as of now, he's not running.
Yeah.
So, sorry, Mr. Haney.
So, I have a motion and a second for the removal of Jeff Russell on the ODC, the Odessa Development Corporation. All those in favor indicating by saying aye?
Mayor, I'd like to abstain. I have a, Mr. Russell has found an appointment elsewhere on the committee or board, so I'd like to abstain.
So, Mayor, we are, Mr. Haney made the second?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second because I asked if he had made the second.
Okay, yeah.
So, I have a motion and a second.
Okay.
All those in favor of removing Jeff Russell from the ODC, indication of motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Me.
Motion...
I'd like to show our hands.
I, I've got to count. Motion is six in favor, one abstention, and one against.
We're five.
Five.
Five, five in favor, one abstention...
And one against.
And one against, I'm sorry.
Five, one, one.
Okay, great. All those opposed indicating same sign, well, I'm sorry. We're going to move on.
Appointment?
Yeah.
I've got one more thing, Mayor, if we may.
Before we move on, counsel, we have any other comments? Now that we've taken the vote, can we make any other comments on this item?
No. Are you going to, are you going to appoint someone tonight? Well, it's got appointments on there.
Okay, so, we're still on item 19, discussion and consider with Odessa Development Corporation, appointments, operations, leadership changes. Taking out the removal, appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Gene Chavez to the ODC Board.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to appoint Ronnie Phillips as my appointee.
On what?
On this ODC. You just removed my appointee.
Okay, now, let's do one at a time.
Yeah, you have, take a vote on, on Mr. Mata first.
Would you repeat the name, Mr. Mata?
Mr. Gene Chavez.
Gene Chavez. Counsel, please allow me to first recognize you because we're talking over each other. So, when, and that's my fault, so let me just be able to recognize you. So, we have, we have a motion for appointment of a Gene Chavez on the Odessa Development Corporation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Counsel, if there's no discussion, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed indicating same sign, motion passed and asked me. Mr. Haney, you have a motion to appoint who?
Ronnie Phillips.
Ronnie Phillips.
Have we, have we got an application for that?
Do we have an application?
We need to get an application for that first.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Our city secretary, can you, after this meeting, can you get her, the, your contact information, your email? And the city secretary will send you an application, fill out the application, send it back to her, and we will put it on the next city council meeting. We just have to have the application, that's part of the process. Counsel, do we have any discussion on operations?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, that we, that we pull the ODC attorneys. Mr. Jones sits on this dais during ODC meetings and has no authority or power because there are two attorneys involved. I think, I believe I made the comment that when that happened, that someday this would come, and here it is. And so, Mr. Jones is powerless because they have their own ODC council. So, what I suggest is, operationally, that Mr. Jones, who sits on the dais when they're having their ODC meetings, that we remove Mr. Moore as ODC council. However, that being said, because I do believe he's a very intelligent man and he knows what he's doing, that he's outside counsel for Mr. Jones as needed to be able to clear up any economic development questions that we may have. And that's my motion.
Okay. Before, we have a motion, before I have a second, I have a question. Mr. Jones, when the ODC is in session having a meeting?
Right.
So, you do sit there?
I do.
Now, so, Mr. Moore is the attorney for the, for the ODC. So, if there is a, if there is an issue that's going on within the ODC, so, who do they go to counsel right there while they're live?
Well, they, they will sometimes ask me, but I usually just try to follow the procedural rules for them, keep them online. As far as advice, anything like that, then they usually call Jeff Moore.
I'm sorry?
They usually call Jeff Moore. But procedurally, once you're here on the dais, that's what I try to do, is try to keep them on task.
Procedure according to, according to what? Robert Rules of Order?
That and the bylaws.
The ODC bylaws.
ODC bylaws.
Okay. Like I was going to say, I've never seen an ODC board adopt any Robert Rules of Order.
No, no, it's by the bylaws. But Mayor, this is deeper because when we started doing the agendas with ODC, ODC doing the agenda, it got messed up royally. And I mean, it was much easier when my office, my staff were doing the agendas because we knew what to have, we knew, we needed agreements there, we knew we needed everything laid out and how to do it. And so, I mean, if y'all are considering doing that, that's one of the things I'd like to have back is to do the agenda so that, you know, Tina can take care of it, we can do it, and we can be effective, because otherwise, we're basically sending agreements 400 miles away.
Let them walk out. Let me pause for a second and let them walk out, reduce the noise.
Do you want to do that, Mr. Mayor? Point of information respectfully. Yes, sir. Point of information for you and for the council, sir. So, what Mr. Jones is talking about first is, Mr. Jones is actually under contract with the city for ODC, under a vendor's contract. His legal services are part of that contract, so therefore, he, he sits on the dais and gives information and, and advice, so as far as that piece goes. Second, city council does not have the authority to do anything with that contract yet. You can direct the ODC board to because the contract very clearly states it is between the ODC and Mr. Moore. It's not between the city of Odessa and Mr. Moore. So, if you want to have the new board, go back and change that, you certainly can, but at this point, you, you guys cannot do that. So, thank you.
So, Mr. Jones, so the contract was formulated by the ODC between the ODC omitting the city of Odessa?
Yes, that's correct.
So, the accusation that, you know, this about the city of Odessa utilizing ODC as its piggy bank?
Yeah.
And to...
We basically work for the ODC.
So, basically, the tail's wagging the dog?
Yes, pretty much.
Which is, in the... That I made back in 1996, 97, that we were going to get to a point that where the tail wags the dog...
You've outgrown ODC. That's where you're at.
Wow. Yes, this is going to be the last one. Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
I just want to back up to the mention of the agenda. At the onset of my tenure, we didn't even know exactly who set the agenda. Part of it was coming from city council, and that's one reason we took attorney and took over making the turn. Some of it was indistinguishable about who the, put the agenda items on. And that was one of the relevant changes in getting our turn.
Point of order on this one. Mr. Robinson, I'm going to completely disagree with you. I, I've been part of this council since 95 to 98, to, you know, 2020 to now, and I've never, the council has seen any council member direct and set an agenda for the ODC.
As a condition of pressure on some of the, some of our board members, I believe there was things put on agenda that they didn't have the background on why they were there in the early days of my tenure.
But it's not, it didn't come from council?
No, it would, it would come from city...
No, I'm sorry, sir. No, that is a false accusation, and you're doing it without merit or proof.
I did not say that they put it on agenda. I said it was pressured, and I'll look back and verify.
If you have specifics, I would be, I would welcome that information, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, thank you. I, I'm not going to let that sit. I'm going to object to that accusation that pressure has been put. I know, I know from this office, I've never put pressure. In fact, I, several times, I have, since I've appointed Mr. Robinson, I've called Mr. Robinson on occasions, maybe two, three to four times, and simply asked him his opinion. Never told you how to vote, I never put pressure on you, you or anyone else, but I'm just speaking for myself. I take offense to that.
That is absolutely correct. You never have.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate for you validating, you know, my position. So, I think for me, on the operations, I want to be able to speak on this, is that there was a push... there was a push by the president and the vice president to be able to remove the City Odessa, the ci, the City of Odessa, the, um, the legal team from setting the agenda, the contract, and because there was always a question of conflict of interest.
Yeah.
There was, a couple of weeks ago, there was questions about incompetency that was made, uh, about the whole department and the staff, which, uh, I took offense to that. Uh, and so as the, the staff did too, uh, they put a lot of work into it. It, and it's in my opinion, solely my opinion, that while the City of Odessa was being able to post the agenda, made sure that the agenda was, uh, uh, complete, and it was in front of the, uh, ODC members, that the packets were complete, and the permanent information was there, there was occasion, since the city had been removed, that there were times, and I sat there in one meeting, where they could not have the agenda items because there were things that were missing in it. And then, basically, the, there was time that was used by the director because of this oversight, that they needed to allow a contractor to be able to speak, and I think this was due to what was going on with the UTBB and the study decreter that they wanted to finance, I did witness that. As we continued to witness it, we can, continued the question that there was inconsistency. And I would like to be able to explore, not the contract, but go into, as we go into these contracts, uh, as, as, as the city doing contracts with the ODC about, um, going back to what it used to be.
Yeah.
And being used to-
Much more efficient.
And, and that was established under the guidelines when the corporation was developed, when the tack, when the voters approved this. And so, like to be able to give the authorization to city manager and, and, and the attorneys to be able to have that discussion.
We can do that.
Okay, right now, it's just simply a discussion, and like to for everybody of you guys to explore that. Okay? See that there's no more further question?
You made a response about, about him saying something derogative about this, about our, uh, about our attorney and their deal, he wasn't making reference to that, and he showed you that in that meeting, but you were so mad that you blew over your head.
Thank you for putting, thank you for reminding me in my statement saying-
He was talking about the other people.
Go ahead.
That we had before this, so, and again, you just keep dropping your opinion, so I needed to drop mine.
Gentlemen, do you think we should wrap it up, Mayor?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, is there any further discussion?
Discussion.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move on to item twenty, appointment of boards. Ms. Engler.
We don't have any.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. So, we're gonna move on to item twenty-one? The executive session is authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one, point zero seven-one, item two. Constitution with the, uh, consult with the attorney and the city council may adjourn to executive session to discuss a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct and state law of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter of the city of attorney, to discuss a brief city council meeting when it took place on Friday, August second, twenty-twenty-four, with legal counsel of the Odessa Development Corporation and city staff. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? So, I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating the same aye?
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign? Motion passed, and we're in executive session, we will return.
I'm glad you're here. And you guys, I know you've been working very hard.
Yeah, I was, I was in Washington, I think.
So, January, uh, seventeen, seventeen, seventeen. They changed them, though, like my daughter, like, they, yeah. And she's, I mean, I haven't seen them before. I don't remember them as funny, but, yes.